There you go, he did.
Okay, we're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. You got that thing on? We're gonna call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, please. Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Here. Item four additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. We have two items, A and B. To, we're gonna add those to the consent agenda as items I and J. Do I have a motion?
This time I move, I do have to make a correction on a typo error that the addition, the first one should read, Berlin Township Resolution 2023-01-Resolution to Oppose Use of ARPA Funds, ARPA Federal Monies for Interest-Free Loan to Ira Township. The second one, 4B, is Riley Township Resolution 2023-13-Resolution to Oppose Use of ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Federal Monies, of fourteen point six million to Ira Township Water Filtration Project. Like you stated, we want to put these on the consent agenda, eight I and eight J.
Okay, do I have a second?
Support, Baldwin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve?
So move, Beeden? Support, Baldwin?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, minutes of the previous meeting. Items A, B, and C.
I would move to approve the file amendments for the January ninth, twenty-three workshop, January ninth, during the board meeting, and the third and second conference, pre-standing committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item seven, proclamations. For Stacy Bixler, she's in attendance this evening. Let's have a motion in a second, and then Lisa, you can go up there and do the thing.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Stacy Bixler for her years of service. Support.
Uh, Lisa, you got the honors.
Stacy, if you'll join me? My honor, to present it to you. It reads, whereas Stacy Bixler, a juvenile probation officer for St. Clair County, will be retiring February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Stacy began her career with St. Clair County on April second, nineteen eighty-six. Through her thirty-six-plus years of service, her impact through individual cases is into the hundreds, but the impact of lives of the youth, family, and community members is easily in the thousands. Stacy has been an integral part of success in her department. And whereas Stacy Bixler was born in Osco, Michigan, moving to Michigan at a very young age, after graduating from Port Huron High School, she went on to attend and graduate from Western Michigan University in nineteen eighty-five with a Bachelor's of Science degree in history and political science. And whereas Stacy is a board member of the Athletic Factory, was honored by Blue Water Woman Magazine in their Fall 2022 issue, and is highly recognized as a leader within the community. And whereas Stacy has two sons and three stepdaughters, and is the proud grandmother of six. She's been married to her husband Joe for just over twenty years. And whereas Stacy's future plans include traveling and immersing herself more in her grandchildren's activities, now therefore be it proclaimed, excuse me, that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners does hereby adopt this proclamation extending our deep appreciation for Stacy Bixler for her thirty-six-plus years of dedicated service to St. Clair County, the juvenile probation department, and to the community. Please join us in congratulating Stacy on her retirement.
Okay, uh, moving on to consent agenda, items A through J.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through J on the consent agenda.
Support.
Uh, discussion on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item nine, ports of standing and special committees. I'm going to start with commissioners.
Samasco.
I'm not a standing committee, but I did attend my first parcel rec commission meeting, and, um, very, very informative. Kind of getting my feet under me on that aspect. Not much to report.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yesterday, we had the, uh, metro planning meeting, and so I think we'll be talking soon about the master plan, but the draft master plan looks, they've put a tremendous amount of work into it. Um, so it's got some great resources, some good maps, so, uh, really proud of the work that Metro Planning has done on that. Excited to get some feedback, and, you know, the public hearings and things will come next.
Uh, the Health Department met yesterday, our Board of Health met yesterday. Uh, they are ready to present updated bylaws to the Board of Commissioners after receiving input from the community and Fletcher and back to the Advisory Board of Health. I think they're, um, in a good spot, uh, wanting to expand and wanting to, to be more engaged, I think is a, a good thing. They're also having a lot of success with the Medical Examiner's Office, um, which we're excited to see and getting some data, and there's some good relationship building going on there, so, all good things.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Vandembosh.
Uh, it's been pretty quiet, so, not a whole lot going on right now in the judiciary or the, um, um, emergency services.
Commissioner Rushing.
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Trello.
I have nothing as well.
Um, I just have one quick one, and Carrie, I think we'll touch on it, that's her report. Um, spongy moths, so, didn't know what a spongy moth was a year ago. Um, if you remember back in, was it twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one? Had the big problem, gypsy moth slash spongy moth came in, um, they were invasive species, came and did tremendous amount of property damage, um, to a lot of different people all over the county. The county actually spent a substantial amount of money to spray for the spongy moth in two thousand twenty-two. Um, we met with, what's her name, spongy moth?
Kirsten.
Kirsten. We met with Kirsten the other day. She gave some information to us. I'm going to have Carrie touch on the spongy moth thing in a little bit. The good news is that, um, it eradicated, like, a lot of them. I was kind of surprised. Um, there is a proposal to spray in some selected areas, but I'll have Carrie touch on that in her, uh, administrative report. Were you, were you prepared to talk about that, I don't care?
Um, yes, I was gonna give a brief update.
Yeah, okay, very good. Um, that is my report. Um, so, item ten, citizens wishing to address the board. Item A, well, it doesn't have to necessarily just be Marine City Highway Corridor, anything that does, somebody would like to address the board regarding. Uh, first one, Allison Hudson, nine four nine five Lighthouse Drive, Ira, Michigan, four eight zero two three.
Hello, my name is Alicia Hudson. I'm in Ira Township. Um, I, do I have to state my address?
No, it's already on here.
I'm against any further development on Marine City Highway. This past year, Wade Trim did a study with input, with public input, and gave a recommendation. The study revealed that the people wish to leave the corridor rule and development, and development only on the ends west of Meldrum Road. Members of this body have continued to discuss and push for development on the entire eleven miles of Marine City Highway. If this body has no desire to listen to the Wade Trim recommendation, and no desire to listen to the people, then why did we spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars on a study? Mr. Vandembosh, you ought to be ashamed of yourself for considering voting on a topic that you could financially benefit from, considering you own property on McKinley and Marine City Highway. Thank you.
Uh, Tiffany Turk, four four nine five Indian Trail, Chinatownship.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Turk, I'm forty-four ninety-five Indian Trail, Chinatownship. Um, we are being told that there's a need for industrial development locally, so residents won't need to commute for work. Yet, in the Wade Trim study presentation over the summer, it was stated the median age for our communities is sixty-two and above, and, um, that we would need to bring workers from McComb and Wayne County to service these industrial facilities. Younger residents are mov- are moving, um, to our communities from other areas specifically to get away from development. They don't want factories in their backyards. The Wade Trim public event held in the summer of twenty twenty-two clearly showed opposition to development and a desire to preserve the agricultural land, as did the survey that Wade Trim released. Yet, there's still mention of pushing development farther east where larger parcels of land are available, even all the way to Starville. If, even if you're hearing from local supervisors who may be in favor of more development on the corridor, they are one single vote out of a full board. For the boards that unanimously voted in favor of proceeding with the study, they voted for just that, a study, and nothing more. Even if the board did vote in favor of rezoning land for development, the public has a right to force the issue onto the ballot. There has recently been a sixty-two acre parcel in Ira Township on Meldrum, on Marine City Highway, that was rezoned from agricultural to industrial despite strong public opposition. Those residents recently filed a petition with the Ira Township Clerk, this morning actually, with close to six hundred signatures, putting a hold on any development for the time being, and forcing this rezoning issue onto the ballot. If there was that much pushback from Ira Township residents where it's densely populated, I can only imagine what the pushback from Casco, China, or Cotterville would be. And it wouldn't surprise me if they forced every rezoning onto the ballot. This isn't just a vote to increase tax revenue in St. Clair County. This would be a vote to forever change the landscape and the way of life in our local communities. I'm asking that you use the bulk of these funds for other needs within the county, rather than paving the way for development that people don't want. Thank you.
Uh, Libby Prill, six one seven seven Trip Road, Chinatownship.
Good evening, my name is Libby Prill. I live in Chinatownship, but I've been a resident of St. Clair County for about twenty-five years. Our commissioners need to be the stewards of all of St. Clair County. Sure, some township officers want the tax revenue that they believe it will generate, but this does not reflect the desire of the majority of residents. We all want progress in terms of better roads, technology, improved utilities, treatment facilities for substance abuse and mental illness, and improved safety on all public campuses. However, this should not be misinterpreted as a desire to give up green space, farmland, and country living for industrial parks, pollution, noise, big box stores, and franchised restaurants. It seems a bit illogical and financially irresponsible to bring this development across eleven miles out from I ninety-four against the recommendation of the Wade Trim study, when there is at least eleven miles of space going north of the I ninety-four corridor, possibly more shovel-ready to launch or expand this initiative, which will also have access to federal and state funding for the ongoing maintenance and repairs of heavily traveled roads. That comes to mind, the failed Range Road Outlet area, historic DTE space, the sizable land space along Griswold west of Thirty-second Street. These are all examples of areas where we actually have some blight, where its renewal offers less negative social and environmental impact on its surrounding area than on the small town and country lifestyle that residents in the Down River area typically seek. The Down River area has experienced a renaissance. We have focused on growing tourism through arts, entertainment, waterfront dining, boutique shopping, and water leisure for tourists. We promote our quaint waterfront towns as meccas for leisure living. I have many friends who come from south and west for those amenities to specifically escape manufact- manufacturing plants, traffic congestion, franchise dining, and endless strip malls. "Let's take a peaceful scenic drive along Hall Road," said no one ever. I completely support economic development for the benefit of our children and grand- grandchildren, who will need jobs and housing. I also believe that we have to have some fairness in how we distribute these ARPA funds that are supporting this, to ensure that we treat all communities with respect for their individual needs.
If you could wrap it up, what would?
I'm sorry?
If you could wrap it up in three minutes.
Oh, certainly, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm almost done. I believe that there is a place for everything, but the Twenty-Six Mile Road Corridor is not the place for this particular proposal. Come back to the table with a fair and logical proposal, and you will have my complete support. Thank you so much for hearing me out today.
Uh, Mary Conlon, three five eight nine Charles Street, Birchville, Michigan.
Hello, hello, my name's Mary Conlon. I've lived in the northern half of St. Clair County all my, but through years of my life. I do believe there is a conflict of interest in regards to the Twenty-Six Mile Road development from King Road to County Line, and David Ba- Vandembosh. I believe he should abstain from voting. The documentation that is on the St. Clair County org website, um, proves, um, he should abstain from voting. I'm sorry, without any doubt that David Vandembosh has vested interest in the Twenty-Six Mile Road Corridor, and has a potential to gain from Twenty-Six Mile Road development. Mr. Vandembosh, I graciously ask you to do the honorable thing and abstain from voting, since there is a potential conflict of interest. I also believe a discussion should be had as to whether or not Jeff Bohm has a conflict of interest. As the vice chair of the EDA, if agreed upon to give this de- development fourteen million dollars, will this money be funded through the EDA? And how would that profit the EDA? Um, the next couple of paragraphs, um, I put in there where you can go to the partial search to see where, um, uh, Vandembosh Farms VF Properties owns the property on McKinley Road. Um, and where they took, um, they bought it, where it's recorded in the, um, Record of Deeds, um, where they bought it from the Peters Estate, and where they took a mortgage out. Um, they took out a mortgage on two parcels, one of them being the McKinley Road. And then I also included in there where, um, David T. Vandembosh and Jeffrey Vandembosh are managing members of Vandembosh Farms and VF Properties. In closing, there are a lot of needs throughout our county, and to throw a minimum of fourteen million dollars towards Ira Township is unjust and unfair to the rest of the township, who all have needs for these finances. Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on, unfinished business. No unfinished business. It's time, item, uh, new business, item A. Approval of county disbursements.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the January twenty-twenty-three county disbursements in the amount of seventeen million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Yes. Uh, item B, the water and sewer infrastructure ARPA projects. So, there's been some questions, um, on, A, the legality of this, to be able to, uh, loan money to Ira, uh, the ability to legally recapture the money. I'm gonna address those couple issues to Carrie, then there's some things that I actually want to touch on. So Carrie, would you like to chime in on?
Um, so, at your last meeting, commissioners raised several questions regarding this project, and if it would qualify under the ARPA funds. My memo on the agenda hopefully addressed all your questions, but I will go through some of those points. The first was, would the project in general qualify? And I do believe it would. Um, I cited several instances from the actual act, and along with the frequently asked questions. I think some of the questions surrounded the interim rule that initially came out indicated that the, and the funds for water sewer had to serve an existing population and could not be used for future growth. When the final rule came out, that requirement was changed, um, and it specifically addresses what you need to do if you are planning for future growth. And it is allowable. Um, the rules are you have to demonstrate the need, and the project must be sustainable. Whereas, you know, if it's, um, twenty, thirty-year project, you need to make sure that that project is gonna be sustained over that period of time. The other question that arose was the ability to loan funds, um, and that is also spelled out in the act that we are able to loan funds. There's different accounting for it based on how the loan is repaid. If the repayment happens before twelve thirty-one of twenty-six, then all the income is considered program income that has to be reused in the same way as the ARPA funds. For loans that mature after twenty twenty-six, that accounting is a bit more complicated. Um, so if the county were to loan, let's say, fourteen million dollars, you actually have to do a discounted cash flow back to today, and that's the amount you can charge towards the ARPA funds. Is there any questions? I believe that, that addressed the board's questions from the last meeting.
So, in, we, we're, yeah, Gary.
I have one question for Carrie.
Sure.
I, I looked at the, uh, United States Code that covers that, I looked at the Treasury Regulations, and it just came out with something called ARPA Flex, which opened up, uh, made it more available to spend money in different ways. Did you get a chance, you know anything about that? It came out early this, like, a month ago.
Um, well, I, I do have all the, the latest guidance, and all the updated FAQ, so, a lot of that had to do with, um, some of the, um, lost revenue pieces.
Okay, because they took ARPA, and it was restrictive, and then they had Treasury Regulations, and then they had this ARPA Flex was supposed to make it easier to spend it on a broader range of things, and I didn't have a chance to look at that. But everything you look at is current.
Hmm.
And, and it would, is, uh, is Corporation Counsel gonna give us something in the nature of, like, an official green light on it?
Yeah, Gary's not here this evening, so he's gonna be back in a couple weeks.
Not tonight, but something around.
Gary did review my memo, and he's in agreement with everything that's in it, so it has been, um, my memo has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Okay, thank you.
There's a couple other things that I just, I guess I want to touch. Number one, when we talk about Ira Township, the money, I want to make it very clear that this would be a loan to Ira with the ability to recapture through some of the taxing, uh, LDFA, Local Development Finance Authorities, I'm not gonna, you know, bore you with that, but we do use that mechanism, and we do have water sewer improvements that are necessary to foster growth. Um, the Magna Plant's a great example in St. Clair. Um, we loaned some money to the city for, uh, the purchase of the property. We're gonna be able to receive our money back in a very short period of time. Um, so, there, there are these mechanisms to do that. I am not a proponent of handing fourteen million, fifteen, whatever the number is, over to Ira without, with not having a repayment method in place, so we're able to reuse those funds. Some other things that, that we've gotta, that we've gotta look at, so, um, zoning adopted by all the communities. So, um, another piece of this, if the county board is willing to look at to continue to go down this path, to loans, to money, um, to Ira Township, home would essentially put the system, the treatment system in place. The county would assist in the, um, call it the pipe, the sewer lines in the ground. We would have to make sure that the communities are in support of this, right? So this, as I've said, this, this can die a natural death in different ways, but we also have to let them know if it can pass these X, Y, Z hurdles, that yes, the county would be, the county would be on board. Um, a resolution from all townships in support, when we first started this, uh, when we talked about the Twenty-Six Mile Road Study, it was the, the study, it was, uh, voted on seven oh in Ira, it was voted on seven oh in Casco, China was five two, Cotterville was seven oh. Now, keep in mind, this was a year and a half ago when we started talking about this. This isn't something that I just fell out of bed and dreamed up overnight, right? This isn't something that I just fell out of bed and dreamed up overnight, right? These are very long-term, these are very long-term projects. Legal demand, financial model. Ira Township's gotta look at the financial model to make sure it's sustainable. The other thing too, myself, Dave Vanden Bosch, Jim Endress, we just met with Gary Peters' office today after the EDA. EDA thing to talk about submitting. We specifically talked about this project. And I have to get with Dave Struck, but to be able to submit to the portal, which would have to be essentially sooner than later. So, it is sometime, somewhat time-sensitive that we would have to say, Ira Township, we're willing to loan this money if you can pass these hurdles. But we also lost opportunity because last time, we didn't have anything to be able to submit on this to, to receive any, you know, congressional earmarks. Dave Vanden Bosch, the property, so the proposed, just so everybody knows what they are proposing does not go to Commissioner Vanden Bosch's property. I don't even necessarily know if it's close.
It's within a mile.
Is it within a mile? Okay, so the proposed, the proposed area for this would be from, and this is, this is tentatively depending on funding and so on and so forth, it would be no more than Starville Road to County Line.
County Line.
Is the, is the estimate for the fourteen point six million. So, I guess I'll let Dave address the conflict of issue. Like I said, it's, it's not going to his property.
Correct. It's, you know, fall short. We're not developing anything east of Starville per the quote that Ira got for water and sewer. The reason they went to Starville was because the airport is right at Starville, and that's the reason to extend it that far. But that, I don't know, they would still have to get through Cochrane Township to get approval for that. So, right now, they had an estimate of going to Starville, but doesn't mean they'd actually go that far east.
Correct. So, there's, there's, there's a lot of other triggers here, and I, I would not be a proponent of just going out and handing sixteen, you know, sixteen, fourteen million, fifteen, sixty, whatever the number is to Ira without having all these other items that have to be addressed. So the first step, and we're not gonna, I'm not gonna ask for it tonight. I'll wait till Gary gets back at the next meeting. But if we wanna proceed somewhere along the way, we have to say, yes, we're willing to support, or, or no, we're not willing to support. If we are willing to support, here's the different triggers that are going to have to happen to, you know, make the counties take the next steps forward with this. This is, this is not going to be an overnight process, this development. I think many of you that were at the EDA today heard the, you know, the amount of activity. I am the vice president of the EDA Board. This money's not going to the EDA to address one of the speakers previous. This money would actually go to Ira Township. So, kinda where I'm at right now. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'm trying to continue, trying to narrow it down as more of the issues came up. Dave, you talked about some of these things.
I've got lots of questions.
Yeah.
We're in a public format. I'm sure the questions need to be asked. I'll try to ask all the questions I can. And I can't say that I currently agree with Carrie's perception of the ARPA funds, that we give out a loan, whatever percentage, whether it's zero, three percent, however that is, whatever timeframe it is. If we were to go out twenty-nine years, that's five hundred thousand a year. I guess you brought up could be four to five years. I don't know how they can come up with three million dollars a year in users' fees from Ira Township. If the loan's going to Ira Township, are they gonna be responsible? There's gonna be a lot of contracts here, whether it's Ira, Casco, all the municipalities that might be users on this that would be part of the payback, and whatever that payback would be. We don't have that information yet, so it'd be pretty hard for me to commit to fourteen point six million, especially when we do have Liz Masters here from Wales Township, and I've, you've seen the two resolutions in the letter from Wales. Four of my townships are in opposition to this. I asked Jim at the supervisors' meeting last night, has his board taken official position in support of this? We all supported the study, so the study is separate from actually supporting Twenty-Six Mile Road. That hasn't been done, so I would ask that, I did ask Jim last night, I would ask that Casco, their full board of trustees gets on board to where they're on board to do this in the fourteen six, and whatever their percentage that they would be required to pay back, whatever timeframe that is, and the contracts involved. What I would also ask is that every one of our commissioners contact your communities, your townships and cities and villages, and get a statement from each one of them, 'cause that's who you represent. And I wouldn't wanna know where the entire county stands on this, rather than just what a commissioner stands on it. Mine was, and this is what I've always done, I contacted every supervisor and told them what was potentially gonna happen, and I attended township meetings on this, 'cause that's who I represent first and foremost. And for mine, other than Ira Township, and I'm just talking with Jim one-on-one in the verbal, but I have not had a written commitment from Ira Township yet, so I definitely would want that from Ira. And who would be on the hook for the fourteen point six million? Last night, Port Huron Township, Levandowski brought up that he had shovel-ready property there, but the conversation about wetlands. So I did contact Bob Wiley. He has numerous properties that he potentially used for trade for wetlands. I think we should look into that also, 'cause he's already got property ready, and we got property that can be traded. Why not go to a place that already has sewage and water and everything that's necessary, and we can use that properties? Whatever cost it is to get that property ready, even if it's, you know, some of it's under wetlands, but if he can trade with Bob Wiley, which we've done on other projects in the county, that should be looked at. The property in Port Huron Township is approximately a hundred and ninety acres, and that's a pretty substantial piece of property. And if all it is is wetlands, and we do have the facilities to do that, that would get used in property or EDA to look at that. That's some property that could be used, so I think we should look into that. Yes, that's about it. I still wanna know who the contracts are, who. Before I can go on board and say, I do support going forward with this, there's a lot more questions that need to be answered before we, at least I would, commit to doing this. Steve Samasco brought up, remembering now that previously, his interpretation of the ARPA funds, what we can be used for and what it can't be used for. And if this potentially down the road, and I know what Carrie just said, is found to be, and the federal government determines that these funds were not used correctly, and we go and spend fourteen point six million, then we are obligated to pay an additional fourteen point six million back to the federal government. So I would like a written legal opinion from Gary Fletcher, or even an outside attorney that doesn't have a vested interest in the decisions of this county. I think that, for this kind of money, I think that would be a worthwhile venture and get it here before we start making these kind of commitments. What we did for the six townships that I represent and the half city of Memphis, we required from them documented use for wherever the ARPA funds were gonna be used. Those who submitted to the county, they were approved. Once they expenditure the monies, they would get reimbursed for that. So that's for specific ARPA funds. Part of me is looking at this, if we can get the loan, whether it's five years, four years, five years, thirty years, fifty years, whatever the timeframe is, that wants to determine what those townships, and the burden put on these townships, I'm gonna tell you, Casco doesn't have that kind of money. They had to defer a project with the Drain Commissioner, 'cause they didn't have seventy thousand dollars, and that's just for one year. Bob Wiley worked for him, and they put that over two years. To try to put this burden on a small township, I think that's pretty excessive, successive, excessive. So, when we go with this, why are we allowed to get ARPA funds and then use them for other purposes once they're paid back? And for lack of a better term, this is the term that came to me, is this appears to be close to laundering money to be used for other purposes. We could potentially use it for our retirement fund, retirement healthcare funds, anything that the county potentially could use. Once we get those monies starting to get paid back, if we're not actually using them for ARPA, I just think that's disingenuous on our part if we're not gonna use ARPA funds for ARPA purposes. I guess that's enough. I could ram this.
No, but I just, I just, you know, respectfully disagree on some of the things you say. The question, I guess Gary and Carrie, so be it, you know. And as I said earlier, the, there's a tremendous amount of other triggers. So, conceptually, we said, you know what, we're on board with this project, but we need to answer this question. Like I listed earlier, we need zonings, we need resolutions, we need all these other different things. And I don't wanna be, and I don't wanna paint the picture that I'm a proponent of putting this in the ground, and then you say we're gonna send Casco Township a bill. The financing mechanism for the repayment here will be the industrial tax base that'll come. For example, the Magna Plant in St. Clair has one point five million dollars in new capturability for that plant. Those, the, the companies that would come in would be the funding mechanism that would pay this. There's tap-in fees, too. I mean, when you put water and sewer in front of someone's house, you just don't let them tap in for free, right? There's, these, these companies pay big money for tap-in fees. So, so there's a lot of other things. We just, I get it, there's a lot of different, there's probably gonna be six months of asking questions out, but if conceptually, I have to, I have to answer that question, would you be, would you be in if we can answer all these things? Then we would move forward. Yeah, I just wanna be clear, I'm not looking to hand a bag of money over without a bunch of other triggers. And this thing could, I told you, could die a natural death. Somewhere, you gotta start the dialogue, and hey, we're interested or we're not, and, you know, this, to build this collection system down there, it's two and a half, three years, too. This is, you know, this is not a.
Continue. I talked with Bill when I went to the Berlin Township on Monday night, and of course, they passed a resolution. And he has a treatment, water treatment plant down there. He'd love some money to pay his off, but of course, he's fine with what he's doing. He stated that there is no way that the people that tap into this are gonna generate fifteen or fourteen and a half million dollars in payback fees. If nobody taps into it, take the absolute negative, if nobody taps into it, you won't get any capture fees, are we gonna hold the townships and the users down there part of their budgets to pay us back? What you're saying now is potentially, they're not gonna have to take a dollar out of their budget. We're gonna wait until people tap into it, and the tax base, well, the tax base would be there anyways if they come. So I don't think that should be used as a discussion for the fourteen point six million dollars. The user fees, I could see that, but I also don't see where ARPA funds are being used properly here if we start using it in the future for other purposes.
Okay, Steve?
Response to Dave's concern, I think the board's general concern is on my concern about the legality. I've been a lawyer forty, almost four decades. I've looked at this stuff. I cannot tell. I've looked at the minutia of it, and I cannot tell. You know, I'm going to, when I give legal advice, if people don't take it, they tend to regret that. And I intend to take the legal advice of legal counsel, and I have the highest respect for Carrie and the work she's done. I've seen what she's done. She's dug into it. You know, I just wanna make sure that we do the best we can. But I, my intention is to follow the lead of our administrator and Corporation Counsel as to the issue of legality. But on the presentation you made, just, I'm gonna make a brief statement and a couple of questions. To me, generally speaking, in my district, I don't, I'm not gonna ask for letters and all this kind of stuff. I, I, I know the people in my district. I know the citizens of my district. I know the supervisors of my district. The general feeling is more one of, where's our, why aren't we participating? Why is it all going down there? And we elevate EDA above other, arguably, more meaningful things, or at least equally meaningful things. That was the first issue. You know, why not spread it around? The second part is the process itself was narrow. I was here in August as a citizen saying, look, let's open this up, let's get some stuff on the table. I wanted to bring this broadband piece out, 'cause I knew when I was doing the campaign stuff to get back on the board, that's what everybody's talking about, is we don't have broadband. We can't watch a television show. You know, we can't do homework for the kids or stuff from, you know, work from home. They gotta go to the library in Port Huron to download their CAD files. So, that didn't seem to happen. I, I tend to be maybe a little impatient, okay? And but, so what I did after that, so that's the second thing, okay, is the process. This, what you're proposing, Jeff, I have the highest regard for your ability to put together stuff. I've seen what you've done. My son-in-law benefits from that directly. My grandchildren benefit from things you've done on this board, and I thank you for that. But to, to look at what you're saying, I wanna see the details, you know, all these questions, who's gonna do what, you know, no contracts, or, I mean, it's a conceptual initiative. So if your vote in a week, in a month is gonna be, let's go down this road with contingencies, I suppose, but, you know, I fully, I believe you probably expect that we'll see some details on this, some specifics, or written, you know, concrete.
Yeah, I think it's gonna take us six months to flush it out, you know, conceptually, because if the resolutions from the townships, if they came back and said, we're not in support of this project, we're out, right? If there's, if, if the zoning's not, you know, re-adopted, you know, some different changes, then you're gonna be out. If legally, you can't do, there's gonna be a bunch of questions that.
So, when, see, I think people are worried, too, like people in my district, or generally, they go, gee, they're gonna, they're gonna make this vote for this commitment. But actually, it's, it's, it's a commitment to consider this initiative and further that process, not commit the money until all these pieces in place, and then perhaps, whatever the timeframe is, but set that money aside now to say, okay, we're looking at doing that with this fourteen point six million. Okay, let's keep looking at that. That's what you're looking for.
Yeah, essentially, and if the, you know, if the questions can be answered, the majority of questions, 'cause let's face it, if you're not for it, you're gonna continue to answer questions and questions and questions. We'll never get to the bottom of it. But I mean, if, if you're, you know, if you get to.
This is a dilatory tactic people use to just defeat the process, just confuse everybody. You know, I know that's on the table, and one of the things I've proposed was this, we're gonna talk about item J, you know, I'm gonna push to tie bar that in, okay? You want that project? Let's take, you know, it's an eight million dollar thing that they're talking about, well, we'll set another eight million. I can do broadband that covers half the county, this ring they're talking, we'll talk about in a minute. So, I wanna have those discussions. And I guess that was my question, is you're looking for that type of, that type of a commitment, so.
Somewhere, we gotta be able to spend, we're gonna have to spend some money to get this thing to a, I'll call it a shovel-ready status, but, but we're gonna have to expend some money to get it to the point that we can even go out and see if there's funding available, federal funds, you know, those types of things. So it could be a situation where we, you know, spend money, and it's not gonna be cheap. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, because when you're talking about a fifty million dollar project or whatever, your, your conceptual engineering costs, some of your other stuff that you're gonna need is going to be, like I said, it's not gonna be cheap, but you have that project. We can't even submit for any earmarks. We can't, and I think anybody, anybody on this board has understood the shovel-ready status, at least if we can get it to a quote-unquote shovel-ready status. We've had multiple projects that have sat on the shelf in the county that we got to shovel-ready status, 'cause we weren't able to get the assistance or some additional funding to, to help move those projects forward, right? But if we don't even, if we don't have that thing on the shelf.
I fully understand.
Yeah.
I really fully understand, other than the particulars. I fully understand what you're doing, and it's a, it's a laudable thing to do. It's economic development, it's, I know what you're doing. The question I'm gonna have, like, on your presentation itself, okay, this issue of, this Peters, now he's on the Appropriations Committee. You mentioned Peters, going to Peters, not for money for Twenty-Six Mile, but money for projects of development. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, today, we actually specifically talked about the Twenty-Six Mile Road Treatment Facility, water sewer, you know.
There may be, there may be federal money available through his efforts, is that what?
We just, so the last two years, there's been congressional earmarks, okay? Whether you like them or hate them, I'm not gonna debate.
Well, he just got put on the appropriations.
Yeah, and there's different, yeah, there's, so you got, so you have Peters, who, that's, you know, being on appropriations is pretty high up the food chain, right? But then you have the other offices.
He's got a seat at the table at least.
Yeah, well, Lisa McLean's office actually got us money for, she's got a million dollars for.
King Road Bridge.
She got the King Road Bridge, got a million dollars for the city of St. Clair to assist with the water towers that.
Clay Township.
Clay Township, two and a half million, and then Port Huron Township got a million and a half for the pump station. But those were all viable, ready-to-go projects that were happening, you know, so, so everybody got those projects far, far enough along to, to get to that point.
The thing you had last night in St. Clair with the supervisors, the guy said, don't bring us a dream, you gotta bring us something real.
Yeah.
No money for dreams. It's gotta be something that's.
You gotta get it to that point that this is somewhat laid out. We're, we're a long ways off from that point, and I'm still like, at the point, the conceptual piece of this. If we couldn't answer all these questions, X, Y, and Z, do we, do we, do we go forward?
My last little point is, you know, I've been contacted by people in the district a lot of times on my former term as a board. You don't get a lot of people, you know, calling and asking, but there's significant interest. Not only people in my district, I've had people from Georgia's district call me, from Dave's district call me, I don't think Rushing's, but maybe yours, you know. People wanna know, they wanna, they wanna say something. So I do encourage them to come here and tell the board how they feel, you know. So, that's the process. I appreciate it.
And, and the reason that, and as you well know on this board, I'm very tax-based in jobs. That's, that's what drives me. I'm really bad at certain things, but I'm pretty darn good at chasing companies.
What did that start?
In the, in the tax base, in the job. In the, in the tax base, in the job piece of it, the next Magna Plant comes along. That was the first phase, was a ten and a half month turnaround on that project. It was a cornfield, water, sewer, power, you know, all these things need to be there necessary for development. So to, to say we got two hundred and thirty-some odd acres and whatever, yeah, we got two hundred and thirty-some odd acres. And that thing's not even close to development, they won't even, the companies won't even consider it. Um, you know, in play, it's not cleared, it's not ready to go. I mean, I hate to say it, when you're chasing a wonderful world of automotive, that's what you deal with. And when we look at these companies, workforce, you heard that last night, what's the biggest thing that they're probably looking for is workforce, available workforce. St. Clair County does not look good on paper, whether, whether we like it or not. What I mean by that is the available amount of engineers, uh, the sheer numbers of workforce. But when you, you heard every, last night, thirty to sixty mile radius, when they look at these spots, you have to factor in Macomb County to be able to track these companies. I'll tell you, we're on the shortlist right now, I'm not going to tell you who and where, but it's, um, uh, it's twenty-six mile road, uh, for another major employer. And it all is because the Macomb County workforce is literally, you know, right, you know, ten miles away kind of stuff. So this isn't Jeff Bohm driving twenty, well, I guess I am somewhat, but this is when you're sitting with the companies and the companies. So when you have a company and they come, you submit your three or four sites that you have, okay? Hey, we need sixty-eight, sixty, eighty, a hundred acres. Just put them on the table and I guarantee you, nine out of ten times, they look at the twenty-six mile road corridor just because of all those other factors. And I think we heard that.
The fellow last night from Detroit Regional Partnership, which is a five oh one C three with a region from here to Chiawassee down to the Ohio border, came up to that meeting to present on that issue. You know, I was, I was impressed by the fact that he would, I looked him up on the internet, who he was, he was in a suit and tie, had the thing he was in his, you know, holder. But he, he, I thought he had good things to say about St. Clair County, that people look to St. Clair County for quality of life and, uh, open space, you know, for, they're not looking for brownfield junk, they got to redevelop, there's a lot of stuff.
You're not finding a hundred acres in Macomb, Oakland.
Thousand acre site.
Yeah, oh yeah, the mega sites too, and, and we're not, I don't think we're in the hunt right now for that, but turn this up, those things. But still, when you, I go back, the night, if the Magna Plant came along today, it's not coming to St. Clair County. Because we don't have that, a site ready and available. And that's kind of where I'm trying to get to that point. And these take, these take time, this is not, I'm not going to say this is going to have, man, we're going to all of a sudden get this site and things happening. But I can tell you right now, we are shortlisted on multiple projects right now and that they happen to be in the southern end of the county. That's not Jeff Bohm driving.
I would like to see a process where we look at issues like the one you're talking about and get some other stuff on the table to do at the same time. Fourteen six over here, eight million for infrastructure broadband, something else. Look at it together, you know, so we can say, I can say, yes, I voted for this down there, but look what we're doing over here. And they're all on the table and we know what we're doing and not this, oh, here, wait, we're going to wait for federal money for, we're going to wait, 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 no. I want to see it, you know, I'm trying to make it happen along the same time.
Okay.
I got two things, Jeff, because I know you got to come to the meeting. One, I would like to know if the residents themselves are in support of this. Because we can want to do all the economic development we want, but if the residents themselves of those communities down there want to stay pretty basically rural the way they are, that needs to have some consideration, rather than the elected officials, they need to take into consideration who they represent. And I haven't had a single positive letter given to me that supports twenty-six mile road. Now, my other thing is Dave Struck, we talked about zoning, can we potentially give him work to do to get with the six municipalities down there? To get all the zoning in line and in together, well, there's four, but you're going to have, it covers all six. If you want to do four, that's fine also. But take those four townships and get the zoning done fast. Because you're going to have to readjust the master plans and you're going to have to have, whether it's a sign issue, one side might be six foot, the other side might be twenty-four foot. And, uh, the lighting, illumination, because every township is different on the amount of lighting.
So Steve Kassman was in that meeting today, he's the township planner for three out of four of the after the fact. Steve met with us to go over this. And I know he's talking with Contra Ville, so he, he, he was there in our meeting after the fact.
We can get a timeframe to where he can get this generated. Because if we can't get everybody involved in on there on the same page, all the township board trustees, if you only get three out of four, and the one township says, no, you're not going to widen our road here, and we don't want any part of this. I'm just the, uh, they need to be on board.
I totally agree with you, I told you, there's a million, this thing could die a natural death a million times. Um, um, but there's just multiple triggers and, you know, if we, uh, some.
I've said enough.
Yeah, no, somewhere we got to start the conversation. If we want to do, then go down this path, if not, so be it. But we will, I will, I will answer that question, um, first meeting, we got to let them know whether conceptually we're, want, want to move forward or not. Uh, we're going to move on. So item C, Parks Recommendation for the Mini Compact Excavator. We have Dennis here, if anybody, I'm sorry, we have Dennis here, if anybody has questions. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I, um, move to approve the purchase of the Bobcat Compact Excavator E fifty R two in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-one cents for parks and recreation.
Support. Uh, discussion.
Brief comment, Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, that was on the agenda at the Parks and Rec meeting I was at, and the bidding process was followed, you know, to a letter. They had several bids, the one they, they ordered, I questioned, it had comfort packages and some other things, I kind of wondered if they really needed it. But they spent a lot of time on that machine, they're going to replace a backhoe with it, they're going to get rid of a backhoe, use the mini excavator to do everything the backhoe does. It's much more able to get around, they'll recoup some pretty good money on the used backhoe, so on balance, the, uh, I think it's a good purchase.
Okay, uh, anything, anybody else? Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Mr. Torello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandemash?
Yes.
Mr. Samasco?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson, vote.
Yes. And all these items that are in front of us have been on committees and then got passed on to the full board, so. Uh, item D, the inmate pharmaceutical.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve contract with Clinical Solutions LLC for pharmacy services at the Intervention Center for three-year term in the amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Support. Baldwin.
Uh, it count, the discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Mr. Samasco?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Beeden?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson, vote.
Yes. Item E.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Conti Corporation for the upgrade and repairs to the intercom paging system at the Intervention Center in the amount of five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Support, Beeden.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Mr. Samasco?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson, vote.
Yes. Item F.
This time I would, um, move to approve the contract with Gate Lakes Elevator to refurbish two elevators at the Fort Hearn Courthouse in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, nine hundred dollars accessing American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Support. Baldwin.
Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Mr. Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Mr. Torello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson, vote.
Yes. Item G.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the Drain Advisor Agreement.
Support. Sorry about that. Um, discussion.
What is that about, Jeff? I didn't really track it at all.
I never knew we had one, and I've been here eighteen years.
I've been here fifteen.
So, Carrie, if you want.
Um, this is something the former Drain Commissioner had put in place, um, it has not met in over a decade. Um, so as part of the project administration is doing for website updates and reviewing all of our boards and commissions, we're trying to clean this up. Um, so we would like to rescind this one since it's not active.
It's consistent with what the state's doing too with some of their statutory stuff. They're trying to get rid of a lot of the stuff that's on the books that's not germane anymore, so, thank you. And our current Drain Commissioner agrees with that, right?
Yes, correct, yeah, we did consult with Bob Wiley first.
That's the first time I've seen the use of this word.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item H.
This time I move to approve the contract with Lutz Roofing Company for repairs to the Fort Hearn Courthouse roof in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Mr. Torello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandemash?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson, vote.
Yes. Uh, item I, the acceptance of the Marine City Highway Corridor Study.
At this time, I make a motion to receive and file the Marine City Highway Corridor Study. Support.
Discussion.
It's just accept and file, right?
Yeah, and part of the study, yeah, and part of the study, I, I actually just received an email from Bill Hazelton and they were talking about an expansion. I didn't read the whole thing, but, uh, it has to do with Marine City Highway, I think everybody knows on that end, it's busy and, you know, all that other stuff. And, uh, possible some funding, so this is where I emphasize these studies are important. Whether you think the study's a piece of, you know what, but you need, you need these studies to be able to.
When they, when they talked at the meeting last night and they were talking about the whole workforce thing, when I went through the Wade Trim study, I thought about that, actually like, you know, why do we care? Well, that's why you care.
It's the first, it's the first thing they ask for, to do your study.
People that are looking at these things in Washington or Lansing, don't know the first thing about it. And the companies don't know really the details, so there's a lot of things that seem like minutia that they look at, so.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J, uh, I know Steve, you've been working on this, I got Jeff Donaldson here, Dave Struck. You guys want to, I guess, come on up and talk a little bit about, um, broadband, I know Steve.
Could I, could I make a, open that up for you, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what happened was, is back in the fall, after the election, you know, I got with Jeff, I told him, one of the issues in my district was the broadband. Um, and Jeff put together a meeting with, uh, myself, invited me as a citizen, uh, to RISA, and I learned a lot about that. I looked at the studies in Muzzy Township and Grant Township, they were actually done by this wideband group to put together this proposal. The, um, the meeting we had after that was administration with yourself, you put together, Dave Rushing was there, uh, planning and Ray Sines, we talked about what to do. Because it really, I didn't know a lot about it, I think there's a lot of people that don't know a lot about it, but I have learned a lot about it. And so then I basically asked the wideband group, this Ray Sines and Duke Broadband, to get me something to put on the table so we could look at it along with this twenty-six mile road issue and the general issue of spending ARPA money. And they did that, they did it within a very short time. And then this Robin Grant, Robin Grant is a certain kind of grant, lots of money, BEAT Grant is a state grant, lots of money. ARDOF is a federal, bazillion-dollar federal national deal where they gave money to a company in Mercury Broadband out in Missouri to do broadband. So that's a lot of stuff floating around. And then we had, you asked Jeff Donaldson to look at it, he'll give his presentation where Dave Struck here. Um, my only point, what I wanted to make was, this issue with the broadband and the fiber, fiber is the only way to go, period. This company, Mercury, they can come in here, they have six years to expend all the money they got, they can put in, line of sight, they can put in infrared, they can put in a satellite, they can do a lot of things. But that doesn't fix high-speed forever. If a company goes out of business and they hung a bunch of junk on the poles and then line a sight, they go out of business, nobody wants their stuff. If you bury fiber and people can run off that, the ISPs, they're going to, service providers can jump on that line. Adds redundancy to the RISA line, you said that they were interested, you know, that you contacted.
Talked to Steve today.
A little bit, that there's a, there's a, a general, maybe consensus this is a good idea, that's why I threw that out there. So I do appreciate, the Robin Grant piece of it, you don't spend a lot of time, I don't think, there's a deadline of March fourteenth. There's all kinds of issues with putting together, if we're going to contribute to the application process, we really can't do that in a functional way, I get that. You know, so the only other thing I'd look at is perhaps getting this on the table as an expenditure to carve out money to do this with ARPA funds completely. Maybe we can talk about that sometime.
So I talked to Steve Tenswell today, and I can barely use my cellphone, full disclosure. So when you start talking technology, I'm, I'm behind. But I had asked him about the mid-mile piece of it, basically what he said, which would be ideal, to get all the, to use a RISA network, to get all the governmental, I guess, entities linked up, schools, governments. Because then that can become the, the piece that you can actually pull off of to provide with this, he didn't feel a lot.
The polls that they submitted, it has a little diagram and they show you it's two rings that have redundancy throughout the county. And then the mid-mile is just that, you're not providing the internet to the home, that's a different service provider, to connect to the mid-mile then to the home.
Yeah, yeah, so I, that, won't even argue the broadband out in, I mean, I know people that have to take their kid to McDonald's to do their homework and, you know, those types of things. It's a big issue out in the other part of the county.
It's not just District One, Jeff, it's actually half the county, District One.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I completely, you know, I completely understand that. And how do we best do it? Um, and, and like I said, having the conversations, I know there's a lot of, uh, federal monies. Um, this one kind of came up on us in a short timeframe, and we just can't pick and choose particular vendors, we've got, you know, RFP processes. I'm not, I'm, I am not discrediting or downplaying it whatsoever, would I be willing to look at it, to put money towards it? Um, absolutely, don't want to write a check for the whole thing, while there's monies that are out there and that's.
But realize, Jeff, that money that's out there, there's six years to do it, they may come into town and leave town and leave a bunch of garbage? I mean, I mean, I want to don't write.
No, I totally understand, but the different pots of money that you were just talking about, the deadline, which I hate to say, you just, you brought it to the table very quick in the turnaround time on that.
State of Michigan gave sixty days, they opened it up, sixty days to apply, counties cannot apply, it's only for service providers, so Duke Broadband will pay the whole piece of the application. My initial proposal was we contribute to the application process, which costs fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, we pitch in. That's off the table because we don't have time to do that, to get vendors, but broadband, Duke broadband, Dave Le Duke will pay that himself and do that if we just do a letter supporting the application, which I'm working with Terry to incent you some stuff, there may be a way to do that, to show support in their application, that's all, no commitment.
Yeah, I'm all ears.
We may follow up on that.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Samasco basically teed everything up pretty well. I mean, we're, we're faced with a Robin Grant, the deadline that's fast approaching, and we just recently got this concept proposal from the Wideband Group. Um, they've got Duke Broadband on board that would potentially own and operate this ring network. Um, and I think the biggest issues come with, you know, the source of funding that would potentially go to supporting any match for any potential provider to do something like this, coming down to the procurement requirements that are, uh, contained within the ARPA, um, as well as the county's own procurement policies. Um, so I think those are kind of the, the main issues I tried to point out in my memo, essentially given the short term, uh, timeframe that we're, we're faced with.
Good, uh, on, we did a letter of support from the county, it wouldn't have to specifically name Duke Broadband, it could be AT&amp;T, it's just a letter of support to actually do this, to support getting these grants. So then, any potential person that could do this could use that letter that the county wants to do this. So if anybody outside of Duke wants to do this, Duke's the only one that's going to apply for the grant, but they'll have the letter of support from the county without specifically saying, we support Duke, AT&amp;T, or whoever, Verizon, or Frontier, whoever it may be.
Can we do that? And then does that put us financially on the hook? Because when you're doing a letter, when you have a twenty, when you have a.
The answer is no, Jeff, that, that answer is no. You can do a letter that really says, we support that initiative, no commitment, clearly, I'm not looking to.
That could be in the letter.
I guess the only thing I would add to that is if you look at the guidance for, through the Robin program, there's basically two ways that a local government can be involved in an application. They can't be a direct recipient, so it's either providers going after the grant themselves, um, or they're going to bring on a local government as a public-private partnership. The other way to do it is that there would be no public-private partnership, um, there's a section that basically says that the local government can provide some sort of community support. But they are looking for, you know, that, what that support's going to be in terms of a commitment. Um, that can be a number of things, it could be, you know, financial, it could be other resources that would be brought to the project. Um, and I guess the only thing I'll point out as well is that, you know, you brought up the ARDOF program, which has basically, um, earmarked, for lack of a better word, much of northwest part of the county right now for Mercury Broadband to go in and they've got a certain amount of time to make that happen. The Robin guidelines do state that areas that have already received any sort of commitment from some other state or federal source are ineligible. Um, so, you know, in talking to Ray Sines with Wideband Group, he thinks there's ways to potentially mitigate that, especially if, uh, you know, Mercury was to sign on and give support for that. Um, but again, you know, that still doesn't get us around the fact that that's kind of a sole provider here that we didn't competitively put out.
Well, I was at the meeting, from my understanding, pretty much only Lynn Township is being covered by Mercury?
No, there's actually, uh, there's a second provider out there, uh, Highline, I believe is.
State of Michigan's gonna be covered by Mercury. They've got St. Clair County, but Mercury's got-
Mercury's got other-
They've got Ohio, Indiana. They've got a huge, huge area.
Lynn, on its own, is actually covered by a different provider, so.
My, my only, my thing at this point was, you know, just encourage Duke to apply, show a letter of support. We do that. Carrie said on other grants, yeah, we, we support them to apply for grant. If they get it, the, the grant application process does require a twenty percent partnership deal. On an eight million, ten million dollar thing, that'd be a couple million dollars. They could do it on the grant, get the eight million, get a commitment. If it, if it can't make the deadline, can't make it work, doesn't come in, so be it. I just wanna at least get in their swing with no commitment to the county and see if they-
But where do you open up the opportunity to Comcast, AT&amp;T?
Well, then you put it out for bid. Once, well, if they, well, I don't know how that would work, Jeff, you're right. If they, if they got, if they put in an application-
Cause to me, we're picking, we're picking a horse, right? Hey, I like the guys. I know the guys that do a great job.
Here's what, maybe, see, I'm not being clear. They're a company. They can apply for whatever they want. AT&amp;T can apply, Frontier, anybody can apply for anything they want. If he wants to apply, he just wants that letter saying, the county encourages the application because we need broadband, something as simple as that. If that gives them the checkbox for the application, for them, it's like hitting a lottery. If he applies, it's nothing with the county. He just won an eight million dollar lottery, cause when they put that in the ground, it belongs to him. It belongs to Duke Broadband, or AT&amp;T, or whoever. But they're savvy enough to be out there looking. I just don't wanna miss the opportunity. They can all do it. I don't care who does it. I really don't care. We're not picking a horse. Let them all do it. I couldn't care less.
Carrie, what's, I know you've spent some time on this. What is your, uh-
Yeah, so Commissioner Semasko and I did speak about this earlier. So, in order to use ARPA funds or that two million dollars, there's no way to get around the bidding requirement.
Nor did I suggest that.
So, you know, if, if this company were to get the Robin Grant and ask us for two million dollars, we would actually have to do an RFP to say, we have two million dollars to contribute towards a broadband project, and others could bid. You know, would it give this vendor a leg up or an unfair advantage? Potentially, um, you know, it would kind of muddy the RFP process a little bit, so.
See, that's, that's option A, but option B is to treat this just like twenty-six mile road and say, you know what, we're writing the check. Bid it.
We're getting paid back on twenty-six.
I don't, that's fine, that's fine.
I wanna be clear on that.
No, I get that. I'm not talking, that's, you got a better deal going there, if you're gonna reinvest it, but this is a dire need. It's like a, like flush toilets and electricity. This is something that has to be done.
Is this opportunity not gonna be here next year?
The money's now. Once this is gone, you're never in my lifetime gonna see this again. I'll, I'll bet, bet my bottom dollar on it. So, I wanna see this committed to something that really needs to get done, that'll go to my district and other districts, and get it on the same table on the one that helps these other districts that you're talking about. Get them on together and put something together so we can at least all get behind it, rather than just talking about picking winners and losers, Jeff.
Can we, can we put a, uh, can we, I don't know how quickly we turn an RFP. Could we put something out there, um, the county's willing to commit twenty percent?
Not even on this, on this, Jeff, I talked to Carrie, but all I'm saying is, all it is, is just that something to the effect that we're, we're applying for a grant, we encourage it because we need broadband, something as simple as that, or just generic, just, and if it doesn't work, you know how hard it is to move anything in sixty days, let alone two weeks? It's already too late. We, we, we're not gonna get the Robin Grant. I can tell that, but I just wanna do what we could to move it along, you know? And if we can squeak it in, if they can do it, God bless them. If they can't, we'll, we'll talk about that. You know, we, we don't need a meeting for that, I don't think, but we can talk about that.
Dave, did you mention that it needed somewhat more of a commitment than just, or what, what, what are they looking for in that letter?
The, um-
It, it could be even a commitment of our staff.
Well, I can answer, I can answer some of that. What they initially wanted to do, they wanted the county to commit five thousand dollars. Wideband was gonna commit some, and Duke was gonna commit some, but we can't do that.
No, I just meant the, the grant application itself, what it was looking for in the letter.
That particular section of the guidance basically says that if there's not a formal public partner, uh, public-private partnership, the uh, support can be in the form of matching funds, permit fee or process reductions, dedication of a single point contact within the community to uh, ensure project timeliness, waiver of certain requirements or other methods that the count, uh, the community offers in support of the project. So, there's some different options in there.
And if I might add, I think another thing that's taken into account is, uh, the applicant would be, it has to be I, it's gonna be Duke Broadband. And the risk is sounding like I'm speaking on their behalf. I believe in their application, they would probably need to list where their match, what their, where the match is coming from, spell that out. Match requirement, uh, under Robin is fifteen percent. What they proposed is, uh, to overmatch it, because a lot of times grants, if you overmatch, it makes your application-
Looks better.
So they would be, my understanding is they would be looking for a commitment from the county so they can then turn that around into the grant application language. They, we secured a commitment of match. But I'm saying that, you know, risky speaking on behalf of them, but that's, that's the way it was presented, the way it sounded.
I think they're trying to do a bit of a workaround on it. I don't know if it's gonna work. It's complicated. I don't know if it's gonna work. Just wanna, they're just trying to get something out there on that Robin Grant, that's all.
I, I just questioned, you questioned me before on the legality of it, and I'm questioning you back, I guess. You know, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to the broadband thing. I
I appreciate that.
Support you, I just like you said, but, but how do we, how, how do we do it? How do we properly do it?
That's what I was frustrated with. I think on a phone call with, uh, the Land Department, I said, you could kind of frustrate, I wanna get it, I wanna make it work. I wanna make, you know, I'm pushing hard to make it work. You only push so hard, that's all. If I'm too pushy.
I imagine a lot of these other, they probably had these things queued up already, you know, I mean, that it was, if you said there was a sixty day window, if we were further along in the process, we had-
I knew it was a long shot. Sixty day window, Jeff, is ridiculous. That's, the state literally came out with this at the end of January, first week of February, and they wanted in by March for this money? And they gotta go through policy and procedure and bidding. Really? I mean, I don't know who's gonna get that money, but that was one of the points they made is, a lot of people won't have their act together and be able to even submit. So it may just go back to wherever unused grant money goes. I don't know, but fairyland, I don't know.
Uh, do you believe it'd be worth our efforts to just have a letter of support and at least get the paperwork turned in without committing any monies to it? At least they'd get an application in for this grant. Wherever it goes, if they're the only grant that is being, they're the only ones that are applying for this, or whoever in St. Clair County, if we're the only applicants, we might get it here regardless of any man. But at least get a letter of support from the county. I think that's what we want at Fairmount.
At this point, really, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna have a motion for this letter, because I don't know what the letter would say. It's putting the cart before the horse. I'm gonna keep working on it. If we need to have a special meeting to do something, we can do that. There's time for that. I just don't think, I don't think it's coming together. I don't think it was ever possible to come together, unfortunately.
Keep, keep working on it. If you guys can figure it out between you and administration and, uh, these guys here, I, like I said-
What we're doing now will help with, with the BEAT program money, with dealing with Mercury down the road, and perhaps even convincing the board to commit and get it done as part of our ARPA expenditure. That's all discussions we're now having. I appreciate that.
Okay. Keep working, boys. Uh, item K.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Marine Safety Grant Program, application in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Support. Baldwin.
Uh, discussion. Actually, this can be a, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L.
This time, I would move to approve the agreement with Blue Water Painting for bathroom repairs at the intervention center in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Support. Baldwin.
Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beadon?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bowman?
Yes, I am actually going to, I received this late, but I'm going to kind of go back. I hit, did have one citizen wishing to address the board. Uh, so David Rivard, um, nine seven one four, Bryce, sorry I didn't get to you earlier, didn't, but-
And David contacted me and I encouraged him to come here and-
Oh, okay. Yes.
Senior moment, overslept. But anyhow, um, I got, uh, two grandkids. Out of St. Clair County rural areas. Earlier, people were talking about shortlists or something like that. Well, they're on a shortlist compared to everybody else, internet-wise. Better off districts, United States, China, Europe. We need it. That's all I'm gonna say. We need it. I don't know. All the technicalities and all the stuff you guys have to do. I worked in the state government over thirty years. I know how important it is to have good internet. I remember when it wasn't so good in this county. Please, thank you a lot. Sure you have grandkids. Hopefully, they got good internet. Ours don't.
We just, until recently, I'm just going back to the internet thing, um, St. Clair Township had dead spots. Cottrellville, correct me if I'm wrong, they didn't have anything down there, and that just recently got, you know, filled in in the last, however, you know, little bit. And it's important because the, it, to be at a, um, who, who's gonna buy your house if you don't have internet, if your cellphones don't work? I mean, let's face it, the world that we live in today, those things are necessary, but I will tell you that I did a few years ago, went and spoke, um, regarding some 5G on behalf of counties, um, to expedite some of the permitting process to get this stuff deployed, and I had multiple townships called me not happy with me. Right? Because they wanted all the, you know, local this, this, this. And to stay at a competitive advantage, you need to stay ahead of these things. So here, you know, I'm, okay, let's get in position, let's this, and then I'm getting reamed out on the backside, you know, by others. It's just like, so, I, I completely understand the, uh, trying to stay competitive thing.
Jeff, one thing to think about though too is what a great economic development piece this would be.
I, I'm not arguing with you. I'm not arguing with you. Administrator's report.
All right, I will keep it brief this evening, because I know commissioners have an event coming up here. Uh, Commissioner Bowman already mentioned the Spongy Moth Program. Our invasive species coordinator has gone out and she has done the surveys. Um, we did meet with her init, um, preliminary, and the calls were weighed down this year, and the surveyed areas are showing signs of significant improvement, and there's actually only a very small area that we feel, that she feels would be eligible or benefit from a spray. So she will be here next month to just give a brief presentation on where we are at this year, um, what a potential spray would look like, and at that time, we would ask the board, um, to make a decision if they would like to go forward with that. I can tell you it's significantly less than what we did last time. Um, so, so our twenty twenty-two spray was successful.
It's like thirty grand, which the one the year before was over five hundred thousand.
Has the communities reacted, selected the spray? Bad feedback or any feedback?
Um, we have had a lot of positive feedback. We have residents that would email to say they're gone. Um, we did allow an opt-out process last year for those that did, that were in a spray zone but did not want their parcel sprayed, and we will continue to do that process. But I believe we only had maybe five individuals out of the thousands of acres that opted out. And then after getting some of their questions answered, um, by Kristen, they were, you know, many did, some did opt back in, so.
Last question, and who exactly is counting the spongy moths and how are they doing it? Just generally, what, what do they, put boxes of sticky tape out, or how do they, what are your ideas?
So, we have an online reporting tool. Citizens go on to our website. They can report that they have activity on their property. And then a staff member actually goes out and surveys their property. They look-
County staff?
Yes, they, they look for the-
Police department?
Um, nope, it's actually a shared position between the General Fund and Parks and Rec, because they do invasive species management for our parks as well.
She came from an extensive background, and that, Georgia and I met with her and went over this, and it's, um-
This came up last year when I wasn't here. I know there's a lot of it going on.
No, we are incredibly fortunate to have her on staff. She is very knowledgeable. Our opioid funds, um, the challenge to the distribution has been settled, and we actually have received our first round of payments. I know I've spoken about the internal work group that has been meeting, and it is the plan to bring forward a proposal to you on how to start spending those funds next month. And that's all I'll have for this evening.
Uh, motion to, uh, receive the administrator's report.
So moved, Beadon? Support. Baldwin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, miscellaneous business, any, Steve?
I see our Parks and Rec directors here, one of the finance members is here. We're talking about spongy moths, which is, you know, interesting. At the meeting, the, the, the stonefly count is way up in the county. Stoneflies crawl around under rocks and people, volunteers go count them, and it tells you the health of the various tributaries. And that was another thing that was, Parks and Rec is that the Blue Water, whoever they were that does all this, it's hundreds of volunteers, they go out and they do this and report back, and lots of stoneflies in the rivers, which means the rivers are healthy, so.
Well, going back to spongy moth, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but in two thousand twenty-one, when those things came out, I actually went and visited three or four people's homes. You could actually hear those things like eating, you know, in the middle. It was pretty, pretty crazy, right? And we had a, um, kudos for the board at that time, because we had something that really got dropped on our lap. Didn't, didn't even know it, didn't even expect it. They just popped up. We hadn't seen anything, I think, since the late nineties, you know, with this thing. And to try to coordinate it through thirty-one cities, townships, villages, so on and so forth, would have been like an act of God. So the county at the time stepped up. I think it was some of our first use of ARPA funds, was it not? Did we?
Yeah, it, it was pretty close to one of our first ones.
Yeah, we didn't, it, there was no way we could have put this whole thing together, that who's participating and who's doing this and that. That's not the norm for counties, right?
It was bad. I, I drive from Aboka through the hills to my office, and driving through them before it even was really aware, you could tell. I mean, it was just the trees were bare, you know, so.
Yeah, but it, it didn't come at a small price tag either. It was literally over five hundred thousand dollars to, to do that. Thank God that we're only maybe facing, you know, thirty thousand this time, and then they're, they're gone for another, hopefully, decade. Uh, any other miscellaneous business? Motion, receive and file?
So moved, Beadon? Support. Baldwin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item sixteen, adjournment.
We'll adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.